City Council Meeting for Monday, May 13, 2019. Please stand and join with us in the Pledge of Allegiance which will be led by members of VFW Post 1621.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as they're receiving a little bit of token of appreciation, should note that this morning, or past Saturday morning, they placed over 200 U.S. flags around the city, which is an amazing feat, so thank them very much for that as well. In case of an emergency, do not use the elevator. Please use the east entrance, go down one floor, exit to the alley, walk to the north side of the police department and wait for further instructions, go to the first floor as opposed to the one immediately below, and exit to the police department. With that, roll call.
All council members are present.
Thank you. Item number three on the agenda is Sustainable Janesville Award Recognitions. Matt? Go ahead.
Thank you. Matt Robinson, Environmental Technician. The Sustainable Janesville Committee created the annual Sustainable Janesville Awards Program in 2011 to highlight excellence in environmental innovation, stewardship, and advocacy in Janesville. The Sustainability Awards meet the mission of the Sustainable Janesville Committee, which works to advocate, foster, and advance the collective efforts of city residents, businesses, and government to educate, endorse policies, and ensure implementation of practices that are both environmentally and economically sustainable. The Sustainable Janesville Committee would like to thank everyone who participated in this year's awards program by nominating a community member, business, or organization to be recognized for their efforts. On behalf of the SJC, I am pleased to present the 2019 Sustainable Janesville Awards to our deserving recipients this evening. First award winner is Laura Peterson. Laura is the Education and Volunteer Manager at Rotary Gardens. She was honored with the Sustainable Janesville Award because of her role in recruiting and organizing volunteers to assist with the education programs and the upkeep of the gardens. Laura's dedication, knowledge, and passion have resulted in the inspiration for many volunteers to become lifelong stewards of sustainable gardening practices. Sustainable Janesville Committee is presenting Laura Peterson with an award tonight in recognition of her leadership and sustainability. Congratulations, Laura.[189.20][189.20](APPLAUSE).
You'd come up for a picture. Thank you, and the podium is available if you'd like to say a couple of words.
I would like to thank the Sustainability Committee very much for this award. I'm deeply honored and flattered to receive it and very excited to use the principles that I was nominated for, to continue to use those in my job and in the community. So, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Our next award winner is the Janesville Velo Club. The Janesville Velo Club was recognized with the 2019 Sustainable Janesville Award as a result of their tremendous efforts to promote cycling in the city. The club organized the successful Janesville Grand Prix Bike Race and also advocated for the creation of bike lanes as part of the Court Street Two-Way Conversion Project. The Sustainable Janesville Committee is presenting the Janesville Velo Club with an award tonight in recognition of their environmental leadership and advocacy. Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much on behalf of the Janesville Velo Club and our 183 members. We appreciate this recognition, and one of the things is, is we don't do it for the recognition. We do it for what we feel is important to quality of life, economic improvement, and physical fitness. And the nice thing is, is timing is everything. In 2000, when individuals, in the year 2000, when individuals decided they needed to do something to make bicycling awareness more prevalent here in town, they got together and I'm fortunate to be 19 years later being able to associate with the Bike Advisory Committee for this year, having Janesville's first Bicycle Week. And it's great that on Saturday, the Family Bike Fest, Wednesday night, the Go Slow Ride, Friday, the Bike to Work Week, and I apologize, Dean and guys, I'm missing one thing, I think, but it's just great because bicycling is good for a community, bicycling can change the culture of a community, and it's even better when we've got a council that understands designing bike lanes and bike trails, an administration that supports it, and an engineering department that knows how to get it done. So, thanks, everybody. It's definitely a Janesville project for everything that we do, and I just want to say thank you very much. We appreciate the honor.
The next item is Consideration in Action on a Proposed Resolution Recognizing Outgoing Citizen Board Commission and Committee Members for Their Loyal and Conscientious Service to the City of Janesville, File Resolution 2019-1659. And once we need a motion to approve that, thank you, Councilmember Wolf. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Williams. Discussion, all in favor, say, raise your right hand. Thank you very much. Motion passes unanimously. Maggie, go ahead with the procedure.
Good evening, councilmembers. Maggie Dar, Assistant to the City Manager. So, as Council President Gruber stated, tonight's staff is asking you to adopt File Resolution Number 2019-1659, Recognizing Outgoing Committee Members. In total, tonight, we're recognizing 24 individuals who cumulatively served the community for 81 years. They put in countless hours towards improving our community and city government, and they did it for free. The Clerk Treasurer is going to read the resolution, and as he calls the names of individuals who are outgoing committee members that are in attendance, which I know there are several of you, I'd ask them to come forward to get a certificate and a city coin. And frankly, I wish we could do a lot more to recognize these individuals for all of their efforts, but we're good prudent stewards of tax dollars. So then, after you receive your certificate, if you could stay to the side, because we'll take a group photo. And then, following this item, we'll ask you to adopt File Resolution Number 2019-1660. That's recognizing all of the incoming committee members, and for that, the individuals that are in attendance, in attendance as your name is read, if you could just stand, please. Thank you. Go ahead, Clerk.
File Resolution Number 2019-1659. A resolution recognizing outgoing citizen board, commission, and committee members for their loyal and conscientious service to the city of Janesville. Whereas members of boards, commissions, and committees provide an invaluable service to our city, advising the city council on a wide variety of subjects by making recommendations on important policy matters; and whereas without the assistance of the various boards, commissions, and committees, the city council could give many complex and significant matters only a cursory review; and whereas serving on a board, commission, or committee is an excellent way to participate in the functioning of local government and to make a personal contribution to the improvement of our community; and whereas the following individuals served on a city board, commission, or committee with their tenure ending during or at the close of the 2018-2019 term, Alcohol License Advisory Committee, Todd Kimball; Audit Committee, Douglas Thorpe; Community Development Authority, Alan Herbst; Downtown Business Improvement District Board, Jim Alverson; Pat McDonald; Golf Courses Advisory Committee, Bob Barry; Jim Hawkinson; David Matshal Davis; Kenneth Pizuro; Donald Prestia; Jerry Raubuck; Historic Commission, Mark Bobzine; Charles Zen; Library Board of Trustees, Beatrice Aguilar; Sarah Hudzik; Beth Tallin; Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, Robert Baker; David Scholmeyer; Police and Fire Commission, Scott Bordwell; Sustainable Janesville Committee, Aaron Agutter; Paul Benson; Dean Painter; Zoning Board of Appeals, Lonnie Kopernol; David Jackson. Now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of Janesville to recognize outgoing citizen board, commission, and committee members for their loyal and conscientious service to the city of Janesville.
Thank you very much. Next item is item number five, Consideration in Action on a Proposed Resolution Recognizing Incoming Citizen Members of Boards, Commissions, and Committees for Their Willingness and Capacity to Serve the City of Janesville. With that, we will have the clerk read the names, and we'd ask that you would stand if you're here in present tonight.
I'll move approval.
After the resolution is read.
Oh, okay.
File Resolution Number 2019-1660. A resolution recognizing incoming citizen board, commission, and committee members for their willingness and capability to serve on the city of Janesville. Whereas members of boards, commissions, and committees provide an invaluable service to our city, advising the city council on a wide variety of subjects by making recommendations on important policy matters; and whereas without the assistance of the various boards, commissions, and committees, the city council could give many complex and significant matters only a cursory review; and whereas serving on a board, commission, or committee is an excellent way to participate in the functioning of local government and to make a personal contribution to the improvement of our community; and whereas the following individuals were appointed to serve on a city board, commission, or committee throughout the 2018-2019 term or at the beginning of the 2019-2020 term, Advisory Committee on Appointments, Catherine Myers, Lorraine Vanderjat; Alcohol License Advisory Committee, Mark Bumpus, Kevin Riley; Audit Committee, Margaret Cohen, Bruce Hamilton; Community Development Authority, Nicole Hayen; Downtown Business Improvement District Board, Jenny Lindstrom, Dave Marshick, David Reimer; Historic Commission, Robert Baker, Robert Allen Luckett; Library Board of Trustees, Adam Dines, Julie Janik; Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, Paul Benson; Kristin Mickelson; Patricia Thornton; Police and Fire Commission, Rhonda Suda; Sustainable Janesville Committee, Susan Johnson; Eileen Newcomer; James Zoomstein; Zoning Board of Appeals, Barry Badiger; Jason Brown; Terrence Kendallen. Now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of Janesville to recognize incoming citizen board, commission, and committee members for their willingness and capability to serve the city of Janesville.
Councilmember Conley.
I move adoption of File Resolution Number 2019-1660.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, thank you, Councilmember Williams. Anything further? On behalf of the city, thank you so very much for the service that you're about to enter into. You'll find it to be something that I think when you wrap it up years from now, hopefully, something that's very satisfactory and satisfying as well. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is item number six. We should vote, shouldn't we? Yes, all in favor, raise that in. I should explain, we're suffering a little technical difficulty up here. The normal electronics that we have to assist us in these things went kaput. So, we're going back to the old-fashioned way, and some of us are a little slower to learn than others, so please be patient. Next item on the agenda is item six, which is Consideration in Action on a Proposed Resolution Recognizing the Week of May 19, 2019 as National Public Works Week, File Resolution 2019-1655.
Resolution Number 2019-1655. A resolution recognizing the week of May 19 through 25, 2019, as National Public Works Week in the city of Janesville. Whereas public works projects, facilities, and infrastructure are vital to the city's continued growth and economic success, supporting job creation and promoting development in transportation, education, public safety, and other sectors that are essential to building livable neighborhoods and communities; and whereas the city's dedicated public works professionals are responsible for planning, designing, building, and operating public works facilities and services, including transportation, parks, water treatment, and supply, solid waste systems, and other essential activities that are critical to residents and visitors of this city; and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of the community greatly depends on these facilities and services; and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials; and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform, now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of Janesville that on this 13th day of May, 2019, do hereby proclaim that May 19 through May 25, 2019, National Public Works Week, and hereby call upon all citizens and civic organizations to join the city in conjunction with the American Public Works Association in activities and ceremonies designed to recognize the contributions which public works employees make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life.
What's the pleasure of the council?
I'll move approval of File Resolution Number 2019-1655.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Second by Councilmember Markline. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Paul Woodard, Director of Public Works, is here to receive the resolution, and Councilmember Conley's going to be presenting it.
Good evening. Paul Woodard, Director of Public Works. On behalf of the entire Public Works Department, over 140 people strong, we appreciate the council's recognition of Public Works Week. We are the department that people don't always know about until the water doesn't drain, or work in the morning when you turn on your sink, can't get through on the street, or garbage isn't picked up. Fortunately in our community, those events are a rare occurrence due to the great team we have in Public Works, and also, more importantly, the support we have from the council maintaining our city and structure. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. And stick around, we want to do a picture. We already did it. Next item is item seven, Consideration in Action on a Proposed Resolution Recognizing the Week of May 12, 2019, as National Police Week, and the Day of May 15, 2019, as Peace Officer Memorial Day, File Resolution Number 2019-1653.
Resolution Number 2019-1653. A resolution recognizing the week of May 12 as National Police Week, and the day of May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day. Whereas the Congress of the United States of America has designated the week of May 12 to be dedicated as National Police Week, and the day of May 15 each year to be Peace Officers Memorial Day; and whereas law enforcement officers are our guardians of life and property, defenders of the individual right to be free, and dedicated to the preservation of life, liberty, and justice; and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression; and whereas the Janesville City Council desires to honor the valor, service, and dedication of the police officers that serve the city of Janesville, now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of Janesville on this 13th day of May, 2019, that the week of May 12 to May 18 be observed as Police Week, and call upon all citizens to especially honor and show our appreciation for the police officers of the city of Janesville by deed, remark, and attitude. And be it further resolved by the common council that the day of May 15 be proclaimed to be Peace Officers Memorial Day, and that flags be flown at half-staff on this day in honor of those men and women who have lost their lives in the performance of their duties while protecting their fellow citizens and communities.
Councilmember Williams.
Make a motion that we adopt File Resolution Number 2019-1653.
Second by Councilmember Wolf. All in favor, signify, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Detective Dennis La Captain is here to receive the resolution, and hopefully he'll say a few words.
It's my honor to be here this evening to represent the men and women in law enforcement that I work with every day. I especially want to thank the council for joining my brothers and sisters in remembering and honoring the officers, particularly last year in the state of Wisconsin, three of which were killed in the line of duty. It's during this week, National Police Week, that those officers and many across the country are remembered and honored. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item of business is item number eight, Consideration in Action on a Proposed Resolution Recognizing the Week of May 19, 2019, as Emergency Medical Services Week, File Resolution Number 2019-1650.
Resolution Number 2019-1650. A resolution recognizing the week of May 19 through the 25th, 2019, as Emergency Medical Services Week in the city of Janesville. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of the city of Janesville Fire Department provide advanced life support, emergency medical services care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week; and whereas the access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rates of those who experience sudden illness or injury; and whereas the Janesville Fire Department has the third highest save rate for cardiac arrest in the nation; and whereas the emergency medical technicians and paramedics are the first responders of the emergency medical services system; and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills; and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers in the city of Janesville by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of Janesville on this 13th day of May, 2019, that the week of May 19 to May 25 be observed as Emergency Medical Services Week, and call upon all Janesville citizens to especially honor and show our appreciation for the city of Janesville Fire Department EMTs and paramedics by deed, remark, and attitude.
I am going to move approval of File Resolution Number 2019-1650. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and vote, all in favor.
I was just gonna, one thing I don't know if anybody else want to make sure that you didn't miss this. The Janesville Fire Department has the third highest save rate for cardiac arrest in the nation. In the nation. And as one person who has used that service, I'm grateful, so, thank you.
Let's go ahead and vote on the resolution. All in favor? And the resolution passes unanimously. If the crew from Station Number One wants to come up, we'll do a presentation and a picture or two.
On behalf of the Fire Department, my name is Josh Ecker, Lieutenant, and I want to thank you for this recognition. It means a lot. As has been mentioned already, tonight, we don't do this for recognition, we don't do this for praise. We all signed up to do this as a job, as a career, and we enjoy helping people and making a difference in sometimes their worst day. As you mentioned, we're third in the nation for cardiac saves, and our goal is always to get better. And thank you to the council for your backing, for your support. We're constantly increasing our training, we're constantly asking for more money for training, for equipment, for our apparatus and stations, and it's all for the community, for the taxpayer. I want to thank you, say thank you to the citizens for your undying support, and this is for you, it's what you deserve, it's what you pay for, and we are thrilled that once in a while we're able to make a difference to you, understanding that you pay taxes every year, and you may not be calling us every year, but in those opportunities we have to make a difference, thank you very much, and thank you for your support. Thank you.
Next item is item number nine, Consideration in Action on a Proposed Resolution Proclaiming May 11 through the 18th as Bike to Work Week and May 17, 2019, as Bike to Work Day in the city of Janesville. File Resolution 2019-1643.
Resolution Number 2019-1643. A resolution proclaiming May 11 through 18, 2019, as Bike to Work Week and May 17, 2019, as Bike to Work Day in the city of Janesville. Whereas May is recognized nationwide as Bike Month, and whereas cycling benefits health, fitness, outdoor exercise, enjoyment of nature, stress reduction, and peace of mind; and whereas cycling benefits cyclists and noncyclists because it is a clean, non-intrusive, low-cost, congestion-free, and pollution-free means of transportation; low-cost, congestion-free, and pollution-free means of transportation. And whereas creating a bicycle-friendly community is an important goal of the city of Janesville in pursuit of improved personal health, reduced healthcare costs as a result of lower rates of chronic conditions through active living, reduced traffic congestion in urban areas, a cleaner environment, and increased tourism opportunities across the city. And whereas the city of Janesville and its partners in a rise are working diligently on downtown revitalization, creating public spaces, and encouraging tourism, and a vital commercial ethos attracting young professionals to live and work in Janesville. And whereas local bike organizations, the Janesville Velo Club and the Rock Trail Coalition, along with the Bike Friendly Janesville Committee, seek to encourage increased biking to work and to school. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Janesville Council hereby proclaims the week of May 11 through May 18, 2019, as Bike to Work Week and Friday, May 17, 2019, as Bike to Work Day in the city of Janesville. Be it further resolved that this Janesville City Council reminds citizens to share the road safely with bicyclists.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of the council? Counselmember Hartland.
Make a motion to adopt File Resolution Number 2019-1643 proclaiming May 11 through the 18th, 2019, as Bike to Work Week and May 17, 2019, as Bike to Work Day in the city of Janesville.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counselmember Benson. Seconds. Any further comments hearing? None. In favor, raise your right hand. And the motion passes unanimously. Dean Painter is here from the Bike Friendly Community Committee to attend and receive the resolution.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Just very much thank you very much for the resolution. Even though I've been retired for 10 years, I rode my bike downtown today in solidarity with our cycling brotherhood. Wednesday is the Go Slow Ride, which begins at the Festival Street, 6:00 PM. That's for all the slower people like myself. On Friday, from 7:00 to 9:00 AM, we recognize Bike to Work Day. Again, at the festival grounds, we'll have coffee and treats down there. And then Saturday, the 18th, is the first Bike to the Farmer's Market. There will be four or five of those this summer. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And we're going to move Item Number 15 from the consent agenda up forward to be the next item, and that's a resolution, consideration, and action on a proposed resolution proclaiming May 2019 as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month in the city of Janesville. File Resolution Number 2016-1646. Would the clerk please read?
File Resolution Number 2019-1646. A resolution proclaiming May 2019 as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month in the city of Janesville. Whereas Asian and Pacific Islander Americans have made many contributions to the history of the United States that include, but are not limited to, serving honorably in the armed forces, fighting for the United States in foreign wars, and advocating for civil rights. And whereas Asian and Pacific Islander Americans have endured hardships, including unjust working conditions, prejudice, and discrimination in some of the darkest times in our nation's history, including the Chinese Exclusion Act, naturalized citizenship ineligibility, the Alien Land Law, anti-miscegenation laws, and Japanese internment. And whereas the Cambodian and Lao refugees who first came to Janesville in the late 1970s and early 1980s sought to escape genocide in their homeland or to seek protection after working for the United States government during the Vietnam War. And whereas Janesville's history and character is shaped by the churches and residents who sponsored Cambodian and Lao refugees, supporting them in their becoming integral members of the Janesville community. And whereas the Asian-American and Pacific Islander community is a fast-growing, diverse population comprised of more than 45 distinct ethnicities and more than 100 language dialects. And whereas Asian and Pacific Islander Americans continue to cultivate, advance, and lead in the fields of art, fashion, business, technology, education, science, government, law, humanities, medicine, sports, and entertainment. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council of the city of Janesville recognizes May 2019 as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month for the purpose of encouraging residents of this city to increase their knowledge about the history, achievements, and contributions made by Asian and Pacific Islander Americans throughout our nation and the state of Wisconsin.
The pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt Resolution Number 2019-1646.
Second.
Motion by Williams, seconded by Conley to approve the item. What's... All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. I believe we have someone here to accept the resolution. Please come forward. And when you do get to the microphone, introduce yourselves, please.
I'm a senior at Craig High School, and I just want to say thank you for this resolution. It's super cool. It kind of hits home for me because I'm a Korean-American, and I've been taking Chinese for 10-plus years, and I just really like the whole idea of learning more about each other and bringing the community together. Thank you.
Thank you. And that brings us back to Item Number 10, which is public comments on items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing and on matters which can be affected by council action. Speakers are limited to four minutes to make their comments, and the Wisconsin Open Meetings Law limits the city council's ability to respond to speakers. Would the clerk read the speakers' names?
Ty Borood.
Ty Borood, 419 South Walnut Street, Janesville, Wisconsin. You know, it's kind of funny, banana bread, I can't say it. They got an alternative as part of the record. We're guaranteed cancer. Here's food preservatives, they're all gas derivatives. Show you guys a copy. They don't put gas derivatives in their food. Also, I wanted to... You point out the public interest requires. Public interest requires only Constitution. Public interest only requires a vote from the city council or any other sworn officer of constitutional rights. That's not something that we provide in the city of Janesville in our secret code courts. To the contrary, I'm trying to encourage building and development by actually taking and figuring the services on the other side of the street, on the homeowner's side of the street, like $10,000, $12,000 is the number I come up with, at $12,500 per service, and anybody that was building would gladly pay that to plug in. That's $50,000, and $50,000 times the 25,000-plus homes we'd have is $1.25 million. Now, yeah, for taxable income, you wouldn't want that number, but if you wanted to develop, if you wanted to do developments and bring a pipeline, like sewer pipeline, you would want your planning committee to have that number. Right now, the number is $12 million compared to $1.25 million, and that's at $50,000 a house. You know, there's a long difference between $12 million and $1.25 million, and that's where your development companies are, at $12 million. Up under the Constitution, Wisconsin Constitution, property taken by remissibles. No remissible corporation shall take private property for public use against the consent of the owner without the necessary thereof being established in the matter prescribed by law. Well, the district court already said they couldn't find where it was prescribed in law in my case. The only case that the city has ever taken on taking private property taken. And even if you can take private property, you have to pay just compensation because them are two completely different things. And right now, you can have secret get-togethers, but basically, it's to cover up for public nuisanceing, okay? To cover up all the other rights that are taken from the not... How do you say that? Not professional people or certain people that are picked on. Okay, there's all sorts of people that are picked on, and we do very little about that. We offer a lot of suggestions, but none of them come to a place where people can actually find safe haven, I guess, in the sense that they can come and ask somebody else, because basically, they don't want to testify against you. The planning, in my opinion, the planning commission doesn't have public comments other than to annex land. We have a public hearing when it comes to annexing land in the planning commission, but we have no public comments. So, are we really interested in what the public thinks? I got to ask you, are we interested in what the public thinks when we can't have public comments? Okay? So, it's not that hard to find. And also, the development, if you look up under Article... I'm sorry. If you look up under...
Thank you, Ty. If you'd like to file the balance of your remarks, we'd be more than happy to accept them.
Constitution 11. You can find how to make that work for you.
Mark Fuller.
Mark Fuller, 320 East Holmes Street. Thank you for listening to me, and thank you for your service to the city. I wanted to speak in favor of the proposed revision of the public parking ordinance for the Palmer Park situation so that people could sleep overnight there on a trial basis. When we think that last year, the estimated number of homeless in Rock County was over 300, and the Section 8 housing wait lists are either nonexistent, I mean, closed, or there's a one-to-two-year wait, these are just some of the obstacles that our less fortunate neighbors have to face, and so if we remove any obstacle, I think that's a plus. And this proposal is easy to implement, it's easy to alter. The fact that the Janesville Police Department was involved in some of the site-seeking and considerations of it says to me that's somewhat of an endorsement, and it gives me comfort. And then, this could be a springboard for further creative work in helping the homeless transition back into active participation in our community. So, I would urge you to consider voting in favor of this when it comes up next month or the end of this month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica Locker.
Hi, my name is Jessica Locker, and I reside at 3421 Tennyson Drive. I'm the Associate Director at Echo and the Public Relations Chair for the Homeless Intervention Task Force. I am a member of the focus group and participated in the subcommittee that researched the parking lot for the homeless. The group met multiple times, discussed pros and cons. We also received feedback from homeless participants and agencies who assist the homeless. We need this ordinance change because there are currently over 350 homeless people in Rock County. And House of Mercy's average wait list in 2018 included 35 homeless people in their cars each month. There is not enough shelter beds, enough motel voucher money, or affordable housing to assist our current homeless population. I understand that this solution is a short-term fix and is not ideal, but it is a starting point for us to provide a safe, secure place for our families and individuals who are homeless with a vehicle. Agencies will be able to outreach to them and make referrals to services that can get them housing which they may not otherwise be eligible for. This will also assist agencies as we track the needs, which will assist us in getting more funding to provide services to our homeless population. Another HITF member stated, "This isn't a long-term solution to homelessness, but that shouldn't prevent our community from taking steps to address the issues in other ways in the present." And this is a cost-effective, short-term measure that can offer families and any of our homeless a greater safety until funding or other incentives can be put in place to address the issues at another level. HITF, Echo, and I support this ordinance change and welcome any questions that you have about this, and we'll be seeing you later this month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Dries.
Okay, sure.
Huron Drive?
Yes, indeed. I'm sorry, I thought that was just a sign-in sheet.
Well, you don't have to speak if you don't want to.
Okay. I'm actually here on sort of a fact-finding mission. I was not aware of the initiative to bring...
Could you state your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
Nancy Marie Dries. I live at 1117 North Huron Drive, here in Janesville, longtime resident of the city. I came here to find out more about the initiative to allow homeless to park in Palmer Park. I'm not sure what I think of it. I'd like to know more before I have an opinion that I'm willing to state. It is kind of a surprise to me, and I do have some concerns in terms of like the effect it might have on the community, children that are in the area using the facilities, but I'm open-minded, so I'm willing to hear. But I think we do need to hear, I think more information needs to be provided through a public discussion. I have the sense that there's been a lot of discussion, perhaps in smaller groups, and I apologize, I didn't know much about it until I was made aware of it, but I think I may speak for other people in saying we'd like to know more. And I think as taxpayers and members of the community, I think we are certainly... We have that right. We have the right to know more before decisions are made, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ed Polium.
My name is Ed Polium, 313 South Harmony Drive in Janesville. By way of introduction, I sat for six years up on that stage that you have there, but the desk wasn't near as pretty. I've also served on the Plan Commission and the Community Development Authority. And in all of those capacities, I've heard many times, not in my backyard. I live in the last, the southernmost block of Harmony Drive before it turns into Palmer Park. So, I guess you could say that the proposal for the overnight homeless parking is in my backyard. Frankly, I don't like the "all in my backyard," "not in my backyard" argument. I think that the proposal has been extremely well-thought-out by city staff with the police department's input. I think that 500 and some square... Or 500 and some feet away from the nearest residential property makes it somewhat of a non-issue, but I suppose if my house was in that 500-foot area, maybe I'd think a little different, but I'd keep my mouth shut before the council. We need this. As a volunteer for a homeless shelter here in town, I see every time I go into the shelter, the need. And this shelter has a waiting list, most shelters have a waiting list. We need something short-term, and this would do it. And I urge you to not be swayed by the "not in my backyard" argument, but to look at the good that this proposal could do, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Polium.
Paul Dries. Paul Dries.
My name is Paul Dries. I live in Janesville at 2404 Lombard Avenue. I'd just like to express my opposition to this change in ordinance to allow overnight parking in the park. I feel that we, the city has spent a lot of money on parks already to make them a desirable place to walk, for children to play in some of the play areas. We've made a lot of effort to make these parks very desirable to all of the citizenry. And I feel that this is a bit of a misuse of the parks. I think there should be other solutions other than taking parks that we have put a lot of pride in. We pride ourselves in Wisconsin's Park Place. I think a little more thought should go into utilizing this space in the ways that it was meant to be as opposed to putting in homeless people. I think the increase in crime and lack of reduced safety will cause a lot of people not to use these parks in the intend, in the way that they were intended for. That's what I'd like to express. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dries.
Angie. Don't want to, okay. Jeanne Carfora.
Hi, my name is Jeanne Carfora. I live at 531 Greendale Avenue. I don't like speaking in public, so I appreciate your patience and your understanding. My husband and I live on the east side, on Greendale Avenue, and we've enjoyed the walking trail. I feel very safe in that neighborhood because of our police. But I understand that the, this provision or resolution that you're considering is from 10 o'clock at night to 6 o'clock in the morning. And so, that removes a lot of possible danger or fear for any families who might be enjoying the park at different, different times during the day. I respect and reiterate what Echo and the YWCA have said as far as this short-term possibility. I see Janesville as a very caring community. You mentioned earlier the character of our community. And I see the results through the Gifts Shelter, the House of Mercy, 1649, that we are a very caring, very caring community. And this is because of your support. My question specifically would be, how many homeless are we talking about? Jessica mentioned an unfortunate number. Safety issues addressed, not for, not just for neighbors, but also for the homeless that would be living in the cars during this particular time. We have friends who have looked into rental apartments that are available in Janesville, and you know as well as I do that there's a shortage there. And if there's not, you know, you also have to include the cost issues, too. If you're talking about a homeless person, there's no possibility for them to be able to, to afford housing in Janesville at this time. Are we responsible for each other? I've heard too many stories, and I hope each one of you have heard from people who are working hard but struggling and have had a crisis in their life for one reason or another. So I ask that you be open to those, those stories. Think about it from your own perspective and how things can turn around so fast. We can talk about possible reality, we can talk about the fear, but I'm asking you to take a chance, to work with the community, to work with people who would be, who this would be such an advantage for. It is what it is. We've talked about the numbers. Now, we need to do, we need to work together with people who are caught in this difficult situation. So I'm excited about this possibility, but also knowing that community action, Echo, House of Mercy, there are so many different organizations that will be working together to provide programs and resources for, for our neighbors in need right now. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Deb Griffiths.
Good evening. I thought I was signing in because I, this is probably maybe only my second-
Could you state your name, please? Name and address.
Deborah Griffiths, 1236 Somerset Court. So as long as I signed in to speak, I purposely came to this meeting because of the possible city ordinance change, and I had some thoughts that I'd already written down, but I didn't realize I was going to be talking to you about it, but I think I will. And I just have a couple thoughts about it, or what I had been thinking about. But as I heard the others speak in favor of this possibility, this opportunity for something that already exists here, I retired from the Janesville School District. And I know for a fact, during my time working there, in the elementary schools particularly, there were times that we had families that we knew had no homes, and they were living out of their cars. We knew that. We were trying to support that. And so, when I heard about this idea, and I thought about the park, I thought that is a perfect place because the houses aren't too close, but the facilities are there. They have always been there. There's lights, electricity, there's bathroom, there's water, and it's always been open 365 days a year. So it isn't like we're adding something, I don't know, to the budget or whatever, because it's always been available. And this is a reality, and they're already trying to sleep wherever they're sleeping. And this puts them in one place where we can recognize this and provide a safe place for them, and probably provide them with the resources and things they need. So, I'm thinking, please vote in favor. I think this is a problem that we need to realize is here, and let's see what we can do to try to help it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Griffiths.
He signed in with me because we came to the meeting.
Stephanie Egger.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Egger, 526 Laurel Avenue. And I just wanted to say thank you for considering the ordinance change and for seeking options for the homeless people in our community. I have participated in the point-in-time homeless count on several occasions now. I forget how many years I've been doing it, but I, I just keep coming back to do it again and again. And I've met a number of people who were sleeping in their cars for various reasons, and people who were sleeping in restaurants or not really able to sleep because they didn't have a safe space. And I don't know how much you know about that homeless count, but people have to answer questions on a survey in order to be counted. And I'm just constantly amazed by the brave people who share their stories with us, and very touched. And we've often been able to help people, but there have also been many times that stick with me in my heart where we can't help. There isn't a solution, there isn't, there isn't room for, a hotel room for the night, there isn't an option for people. And, and they're really great people. I mean, veterans and families and people with disabilities who just are down on their luck. I've never had a bad experience going up and introducing myself and asking survey questions and interacting with people who are sleeping in their vehicles, and knock on wood here, but I really think that they're needing our help and needing some more options, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
That was the last person.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the City Manager's Update.
Good evening, Councilmembers, ladies and gentlemen. A couple of updates for everybody. First of all, if you have not heard, our Town Square, specifically the west side of that project, has received an award from the American Public Works Association, Wisconsin Chapter, as the Project of the Year Award. So that's great news for our Public Works Department who coordinated the project, certainly great news for our downtown, and great news for our city at large. What I do like about it is we can now refer to the Town Square as the award-winning Town Square. So, good news for the community. Second thing is, is listed on there is grant funding for bus replacements. If you've paid attention to city updates here over the last six months, you'll recognize that the city has received grant funding to replace 14 of our 17 buses. But because of the frugality, if you will, of our JTS Bus System Director, Becca Smith, she and her team have been very, very thrifty in trying to figure out how we build these buses and maximize those grant dollars. And because they were frugal and they maximized those grant dollars, they actually found enough savings in those grant fundings to allow for the purchase of another bus by, by those grant fundings. And that's a $500,000 fine, if you will, in grant funding. So that's a great news story that we now have 15 buses out of 17 that are inbound over the next year to two years. Lead time on a bus order is generally about a year to 18 months. So a great news story. We appreciate the work of JTS, and certainly the council in approving those grant requests. So, good news for the community. Next thing, and I'm out of time there, for a picture. Next thing is, is one of the things the city has done over the last six years, I guess, is we've participated with the University of Wisconsin at Whitewater for Make a Difference Day, and that's a great project at the end of April where we bring students from UW-Whitewater to the community, and then we partner up with a whole bunch of community partners to make a difference in Janesville. And so this year, we had projects at Rotary Gardens, we had projects at Jeffers Park, we had projects here in the downtown, and we had projects out at Riverside Park. And so we want just to recognize the relationship that we have with the University of Wisconsin at Whitewater, and certainly all of our community partners that are listed down there. And I'm going to read them just for the impact, if you will. But Downtown Janesville Incorporated, Friends of Riverside Park, the Ice Age Trail Alliance, Rock County Chapter, the Rock Trail Coalition, Rotary Botanical Gardens, and of course, University of Wisconsin Whitewater. And so, great news story for the community, and hope that we can continue to move that effort forward in the coming years. Next on the web, just an update at our city website slash recreation. If you want to register for a summer program, now's the time to go online and, and sign up. We have programs for youth and adults, certainly aquatics programs throughout the summer, and we always have senior programs out there. But we encourage you to visit the City of Janesville's recreation website, or give them a call at 755-3030 to get registered for those programs. Great community effort and, and one of the assets, if you will, of Wisconsin's Park Place. So upcoming events, as discussed earlier, May 11th through the 18th is the Bike to Work Week. And so if you're looking for information on Bike to Work Week activities, please check them out on Facebook for all the events throughout the week. May 15th, as discussed previously, is Law Enforcement Memorial Ceremony. That's hosted by the Rock County Sheriff's Office this year. It'll be at the Roth Pavilion in Lower Courthouse Park beginning at 6:00 PM. Hope the community comes out to support that effort. May 18th is Downtown Janesville Incorporated, their Spring Wine Walk in the downtown from noon to 5:00 PM. It's turned into quite the event, very, very well-attended, and a great opportunity to enjoy hopefully some nice weather, but certainly our ever-improving downtown. May 23rd, Arise Now has a Community Connection Talk. They're going to be doing that at JPAC, where it's an update on all things Arise in our, specifically in our downtown. That goes from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. If you've heard Arise and you don't know the difference between Arise and Arise Now and what's going on in the downtown, I encourage you to come sit in. It's two hours, well-spent, there's Q&amp;A opportunity, just a great event to showcase what's going on in the downtown. As a reminder, May 27th is Memorial Day. Most cities, city facilities are closed. We do have a parade in our downtown from beginning at 10:00. It finishes up over at Traxler Park at about noon, and then there's a ceremony to honor our fallen military members in, in Traxler Park at the Veterans Plaza. May 31st is a Family Empowerment Fair. It's down at the Rock County Job Fair from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. June 1st is JPD's Bike Rodeo at Wilson Elementary School from 10:00 AM to noon, always a very positive event. June 1st is also Take a Kid Fishing Derby at Traxler Park Lagoon beginning at 9:00 AM. And as a reminder, June 4th through August 27th is Music at the Marv, every Tuesday evening at the Roth Pavilion in Lower Courthouse Park. There are food vendors that will be available. It's open at 5:30 PM, and music starts at 6:30 PM. So we encourage you to come out on Tuesday evenings and enjoy that great piece of the City of Janesville and our downtown group. As always, there's lots of information out there about what goes on in the City of Janesville this month on our award-winning Park Place Views TV program. We've got Fire Chief Rhodes talking about Fire Department and the activities of the Fire Department. There's also a tour of the central fire station, some demos on special team equipment, and you get a chance to meet some of our JFD personnel. So you can see that one-hour program on JATV, Charter Channel 994, or on their YouTube channel. If you're interested in receiving information pushes from the city, and we push out press releases, we put out, push out emergency notifications, and any critical updates, we'll do that and push that to you. So if you give us your email, email address, we will put you on our list. And so you can go to our city website slash email list and sign up. You can always call us at the City of Janesville, 755-3000, or my office at 755-3177. You can like us on Facebook, follow us on Twitter, receive emergency updates from the JPD on Nixle. We now have a City of Janesville LinkedIn site, so if you want to go to the LinkedIn page for the City of Janesville and learn about city updates, but specifically job announcements and business activities, you can do that. If you scan the QR code, you can go to that email signup, signup list, and I always encourage you to please visit the City of Janesville's website. Lots of great information there. Pending any questions, that's all I have this evening.
Questions for the City Manager. Hearing Nun, thank you, Mark. The next several items, Items 12 through 20 are consent agenda items, and they'll be taken action together, approved unless some council member would choose to act on them separately. I'll read them, and then we'll see what stays. Item number 12, City Council Meeting Minutes from the following dates, the regular meeting of April 22nd, 2019, the closed session of April 22nd, 2019, for approval only, not release, the special meeting of May 1st, 2019, and the special meeting of May 3rd, 2019. Item number 13, Licenses and Recommendations. Item number 14, Consideration and Action on a Proposed Resolution in Commendation of Brian C. Foster for his more than 26 years of service to the City of Janesville, File Resolution 2019-1654. Item number 16, Consideration and Action on a Proposed Resolution Authorizing the Sale of Property Located at 1116 Oakland Avenue, File Resolution 2019-1649. Item number 17, Consideration and Action to Repeal County, Council Policy Statement Number 15, Use of Council Study Committees. Item number 18, Consideration and Action on a Developer's Memorandum of Understanding Agreement to Extend Public Infrastructure for Emerald Estates, Estates Third Edition. Item number 19, Consideration and Action on a Proposed Resolution Approving the Final Plaid of Emerald Estates, Third Edition, File Resolution 2019-1652. And item number 20, Consideration and Action- And item number 20, consideration and action to confirm the council president's council member committee assignments. That is by resolution. Councilmember Williams.
I don't need to really pull for the vote. I just wanted to make a comment on item number 16. Is that acceptable?
Sure.
This is the sale of the property at 1116 Oakland Avenue, and I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware of that we've got this property under tax foreclosure and we're selling it, and the city is returning a net profit of, or net of $63,000, which will go back into the fund for future projects. And I just thought that that should be noted, that that was going back into our, the funds going back in, and we got $63,000 out of it. A lot of times, we barely make money or lose money on it. So, I always think when it's something of good news, we should get that out there, too. The other item, item number 17, I would like to pull from the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Conley.
Yeah, I would like to pull item 12C, minutes from the May 1st meeting.
Thank you. Any other items to be pulled for separate discussion? Hearing none, the balance of the items are approved. Let's go to item number 12C, special meeting minutes of May 1st, 2019.
Thank you. I just want to correct the omission that by consensus, the council did agree that any applicant who had received three votes would be interviewed on May 3rd.
Any objection? Let the records show that the agenda or the minutes have been approved without change. Item number 17.
My technology is letting me down.
Item number 17, consideration and action at Council Policy Number 15.
I guess I'm having a hard time seeing why this one should be removed. I don't see a problem with it staying on the books. And I guess I would be in favor of this policy staying in the way that it is. So, I guess I'll make a motion that we retain the Council Policy Number 15.
Motion to retain Council Policy Number 15. Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Hearing none, the motion fails. Councilmember Wolf.
I move we repeal Council Policy Statement Number 15.
Councilmember Wolf moves to repeal. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Mark Line. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion is approved to repeal unanimously by one. Six minutes, six to one. That brings us to item number 21, which is a revaluation update presentation by the city assessor.
Good evening, and thank you, Council President Gruber and council members. Tonight, I will be presenting information in regards to the 2019 citywide revaluation and give you an update of where we are at with that process. As I showed you, or maybe this isn't going to work.
Sit on.
There you go. Add to our technical difficulties, I guess. So, as I stated back in August, when I talked to you back in 2018, the goal of a revaluation is to bring all properties to 100% of fair market value. The purpose of a revaluation is proportionately distribute the tax burden based on those fair market values. And the outcome of that is to get equity within our assessments. So, our assessments are up in the city of Janesville, and there's many reasons, and some of those have already been stated here this evening tonight. So, and they've been reported by many different member, or many different sources of information. So, the first one is we've added since 2011 almost 11,000 new jobs in the community of Rock County. And that's per the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics. We've had low unemployment rates that have hovered around 3% the last year, and tourism spending has been up for eight years in Janesville. And that's per the Wisconsin Department of Tourism. We also, in Janesville-Beloite area, have been ranked 12th in the nation by Realtor.com as one of the hottest real estate markets in 2018. And the Wisconsin Realtors Association has stated that the tight supply of housing in the Janesville area has moved to the consistent upward prices that we've seen. So, that is also shown by this graph. You can see the red line represents our assessments have stayed, our average assessed value has stayed at 122,200 since the last revaluation in 2011. And then, the market kind of went down and up since then, but still hovering around that average assessment. But since 2016, the market has substantially increased, and we have seen the values go from 122,200 up to almost 150,000 for that same average assessed home. I'm going to go back a couple of slides here, and I apologize, I didn't get these in the right order. So, every year, every community needs to report to the Wisconsin Department of Revenue their values. And the city of Janesville has shown that we have grown twice as fast as our peer communities over the past three years. The top line there shows Janesville at 23.1%. The state average growth has been 12%, and the peer average growth has been 11.3%. So, I think that speaks volumes for the community and just another factor that supports why we have our values going up in the city of Janesville. Move back forward here. So, our anticipated average assessment change will be somewhere between 26% and 31%. That is a substantial change for the members of the community, and I want to reiterate that revaluations in themselves are revenue-neutral. That 26% to 31% increase is just the average change, and that's not a one-to-one correlation in what you will see in your taxes going up at the end of this year in December. So, the average changes, say our average change is 30%. When you receive your tax bill, you're going to want to calculate your individual change. From there, the properties that did change, the average change, will pay about the same in property tax. The property owners who have moved higher than the average change should expect to pay more, and the property owners that decreased below the average change should expect to pay less in property taxes than they did the prior year. And assessments only determine each property owner's share of the total tax levy to be So, once we have our notices of assessment change released to the community, which is anticipated to be shortly, you, we will have a tool on our website that's an estimated tax calculator. That tax calculator, they'll be able to plug in their new assessed value that they just received on that notice, and it will give them an estimate based off of the 2018 budgets. So, it would be as if you received that tax bill last year with that new value, what you would have paid in taxes. We're going to highly stress that that is an estimate because not everybody has gone through their budget process yet, and we won't know those total tax impacts until we get to November of 2019, once the city council, the county board, the school board of Janesville and Beloit, and also Blackhawk Tech complete their 2020 levies or their budget So, the parcel breakdown right now in the city of Janesville for 2019, I guess I shouldn't say right now because you guys are still living in 2018 of the data you can see. So, the new parcel breakdown will be as follows. The residential class, the percent of parcels that residential represents is 90%, but they represent 72% of our total assessed value. Commercial properties represent 6%, but they represent 26% of our total value in the community. And then, the other is just like agricultural or other types of different parcels. We have eight different classes, but the two main ones are residential and commercial. You can see on this slide, the value breakdown of residential properties. We are still valuing our commercial properties at this time, so we don't have all of that data. But the breakdown here shows what each property was valued at as a total percentage to the city from 2011 to 2019. The biggest difference you'll see here, or that I see when I look at these slides, is that in 2011, we had 80% of our parcel base assessed at 150,000 or less. And now, in 2019, we have 50% of the parcel base at 150,000 or less. So, there definitely has been, you can see that increase in the numbers here, too, with how the assessments break down by parcel throughout the city. Commercial values, as I stated, are still being finalized. However, the hospitality industry, so segments of that, like hotels or restaurants in those areas, plus multifamily and warehouse, will be, they're showing that the values are increasing, while office and retail are seeing some decreases, not overall, but certain segments of those are seeing decreases. Offices continued to decline and struggle in Janesville since 2011. We're seeing that in the sales and with the income data we've received from property owners. And retail is just going through a state of transition where the smaller footprint stores, 10,000 or less, are more desirable than the bigger big boxes in the area. So, our timeline for the project yet is here by the end of May. At the latest, by the beginning of June, will we be sending out those notices of assessment change to every property owner in the city of Janesville. Once those are out, we will head into our open book process during June, and those appointments that we have are by appointment only and scheduled through the assessor's office. Once that is done, then we head into a further appeal process called Board of Review that's more formal, and that will be held in August sometime. And that's also by appointment only, but those are scheduled through the clerk treasurer's office. The dates, the specific dates and times will be provided in the notice of assessment change once those are released to the community. This is an example of a change notice, and I apologize, it looks a little small. This is the top half of an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven sheet of paper. It will show the property owner's address, the parcel number. Underneath, in that big, open white space, we are going to put in our notices, the average assessment change was blank, so that you have that information right on the notice. And when you're doing the math to find out your average, your change, you can compare where you're at to the average. It will also contain the specific dates and times and location for open book and Board of Review, and then also contain your 2018 assessment and now your new proposed 2019 assessment in that notice. Along with that notice of assessment change, we are sending a frequently asked question insert that has a ton of information on it. It is double-sided and has information, if you're coming to open book, of what we expect the property owners to provide for us. And other resources, the website will be continually updated in our revaluation section of the city's website. Once we have released those notices, we'll have a list of arms-length sales that we called valid in our office, and that's what we use to calibrate our system. We'll also have the estimated tax calculator. We'll have our neighborhood maps because our neighborhoods are bigger and broader than what the average citizen thinks their neighborhood is. We'll also have videos, so we have the assessment video that Mark showed not too long ago of what an assessor does. And then, we'll also have a link to the Park Place Views episode that I did in the beginning of the year, or December of last year, sometime in that timeframe, of more specific information of what a revaluation is and what to do if you don't agree with your new value. We'll also have links to the Department of Revenue's website, and those links will link to the Department of Revenue oversees what we do in our office, so they have more rules and guidelines and a property owner guide and things like that for community members to reference. So, lots of tools and resources, not only about public events, as Mark stated, but definitely each home on the website has a lot of information. So, in summary, revaluations are revenue-neutral. They are not completed to increase the tax collection. They do not determine how much tax is needed. Revaluations are completed to proportionately distribute the total tax to be collected based on individual market values of each property. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Questions for the city assessor. Councilmember Conley.
I've got a couple.
Followed by Councilmember Farrow.
Just for people to be clear on this, when they get your assessment, that's not the city's determination on what their house will sell for?
No, because we're seeing that the market is still increasing. So, it, again, we do an estimate of value, and depending on when that estimate is done, our estimates will be based off of the arms-length sales that occurred in 2018. So, if our data is correct on the property, we should be in the ballpark of what it would sell for, but we're not going to be the exact number they would sell for.
Correct. I mean, that's a common misconception I've hear out in the community that they just told me my house is worth this. I don't think it is. When you send out your frequently asked questions, will that show on there what the average percent change was across the city?
No, since we're sending out 26,000 notices, those are being printed now beforehand, but the assessment, the actual notice that we'll be printing here shortly, will contain that average assessment change.
Okay, so they'll be able to look at that, determine where they, where they fit?
Yep.
Great. And then, will this be effect for taxes? Will it go back to January 1st, 2019, or will it be effective January 1st, 2020?
Nope. These assessments will go back to January 1st of 2019.
Okay, so they will be on this year's tax bill?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Farrow.
Thank you. Michelle, one of the things I'm always interested is who our top commercial taxpayers are. Could you name just a few of those?
We're not done with the commercial valuation piece of the revales yet. So, for me to state what they were, I would be speculating maybe off of years past, so...
Okay, that's fine. The other question I have, and I'm really curious about this, is the former GM site. And maybe that's also a specific question, but how do you anticipate that property being assessed? I mean, it seems like, well, when it gets developed, it will be assessed at a higher amount. Can you just give me a general idea how we would approach the assessment for that former GM site?
So, for 2019, we're not making many changes, other than the cost table changes to that property. It will be one of the few commercial properties left on the cost approach versus the income approach. And we valued that property, it got shifted back to be locally assessed for 2018. And with that, we went through the process and reviewed that parcel, and we've already removed a lot of value from that, deeming that the buildings were hindering the further, or the further development or redevelopment of that parcel. So, the value is more minimal, or probably the lowest it's ever been on the property now. And then, once those buildings are removed, which I'm expecting that to probably be fully done by the end of this year, I would say for sure, then we will value that as vacant land at its new highest and best use as new redevelopment sites. So, I would say now, we're at the lowest value of that property, and then, as it's redeveloped, it will continue to grow and get higher.
Great. Thank you.
Questions, Councilmember Conley.
Have you seen the revaluations increase in every neighborhood in Janesville?
No.
Can you talk a little bit about why that might be?
Some of our condo neighborhoods haven't fully come back from the new regulations with lending, that we've seen some of them, not all of them. I would say the majority of them have come back, but there's some, some of the areas that have not fully come back yet that will not be seeing an increase. And other than that, I would say all areas of the city have seen increases in value.
So, even like the Fourth Ward and Look West, are they going to see increases about the same average as the rest of the community, then?
Probably not Fourth Ward, but our other areas of the city, we're seeing that there's such a lack of supply of housing that each side of the city is acting more like the east side than it ever has in the past.
Okay. So... So do we have a shortage in the Fourth Ward as well, or no?
I would say we have a shortage of housing everywhere in the city.
So what, what about the Fourth Ward makes it not increase as the rest?
Just the desirability factor. It hasn't fully been restored to what it originally was at one time.
Okay. And how many houses do you actually look at?
Every year in our office, we review all of the sales that happen within the city, and we review all of the permits and all the new construction. Typically, that's between 2,000 to 3,000 properties that we request to visit, and we get into about 40% of those.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Questions for the city assessor? I've got just one, and I'm actually kind of reluctant to ask it because I'm not sure that there is a short answer to it, but there's multiple approaches to how you appraise a property. One is the cost approach, and the other is an income approach. And what's the difference? And why is the difference such that you apply it in some instances in commercial properties and other instances you don't? Or is it, is it provided consistently and using both methods and coming to a fair conclusion?
So when you value properties, you want to value each, like, type in a same manner? So if you're valuing warehousing, you want to value all warehousing properties either on the costs, the income, or the sales approach? And we review all three to determine which one seems the most logical or reasonable. And that also is dependent upon the income and expense response that we receive from the community. If we didn't receive a lot of income and expense information from commercial property owners, then we're kind of left to be guessing more at that than we would with other approaches. So each one is looked at individually to determine which method would be the best in that circumstance. Typically, an income approach would come in lower than a cost approach, just the nature of the valuation.
So the lesson there is if I'm a commercial property owner, it's probably in my best entrance, interest to report my income in order to ensure that I'm getting the most accurate appraisal, is that, or assessment, is that correct?
Correct, that's true for any class of property, to either, one, let us in and respond to our request to view the property, or, two, when we request income and expense information, to respond to that request.
Any other last questions? Thank you very much for the presentation. Brings us to Old Business, item number one, public hearing in action on a proposed resolution vacating a portion of Wall Street west of Academy Street, file resolution number 2019-1632. Dwayne Cherick.
Good evening, City Council. Dwayne Cherick, Planning Director for the city. The city has received a request from Matt Sigmund, owner of Centerway Auto Repair, to vacate a portion of West Wall Street. The parcel in question is located at the southwest corner of Centerway and North Academy Street, and contains approximately 5,300 square feet in total land area. This street segment was originally dedicated by subdivision Platt way back in 1854. However, when the state of Wisconsin constructed the extension of Highway 51 through Janesville in the 1950s along the current Centerway corridor alignment, the Department of Transportation acquired this local right-of-way for that project. West Wall Street has subsequently been converted to a dead-end or substrate, stub-street, rather, following that project. At the Department of Public Works' request, the Department of Transportation recently deeded ownership of this existing street right-of-way back to the city of Janesville to allow for the proposed vacation to occur. The street was last resurfaced in 1983. As you can see from these photos, the existing street pavement and sidewalk condition is in very poor condition. Access along the street is limited to a single driveway that only serves Centerway Auto Repair. The Department of Public Works has determined that this facility is no longer necessary for public street purposes and may be vacated. The, if the council approves the vacation this evening, ownership of the existing right-of-way would revert to the abutting property owner and business use. The petitioner, in this case, intends to utilize the vacated right-of-way for additional parking and the establishment of additional green area along the Centerway corridor, which is delineated on the, the site plan that you can see on the monitor. Overall, the project would improve traffic safety by eliminating the Wall Street intersection at Academy, which is situated too close to the Highway 51 corridor. Resolution number 2019-1632 would also retain an easement for utility purposes over the vacated area to provide access for future maintenance to public utilities that are already in place. The plant commission reviewed and approved the proposed vacation on April 15th, and this evening, the city count, or the city, rather, recommends council adopt file resolution number 2019-1632, following the required public hearing for this item. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Mr. Cherick? Seeing none, let's open the public, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Markley.
I didn't have one.
Let's open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to speak to this item, which is the vacation of a portion of Wall Street west of Academy, that's first call. Second call. Third call. Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Wolf.
I move approval of resolution 2019-1632.
Second by Councilmember Williams. Questions or comments?
No additional.
I've been down to this property several times, and, yeah, it doesn't really make sense to have that anymore and go back to the owner. And I believe the owner's been taking care of some of that area already, and just, it'll look a lot better having more green space, and they can get some additional parking, so it's a good thing. Thank you.
Anyone else? Let's go ahead and vote. And the resolution is approved, 7-0. Thank you. Next item, item number two under Old Businesses, second reading, public hearing in action on a proposed ordinance amending the end consumption time of fermented malt beverages and wine in conjunction with a beer and wine permit in certain areas of Traxler Park, Riverside Park, Palmer Park, the Town Square, and Festival Street during private events. File ordinance number 2019-753. Shelley Slaypack.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. Shelley Slaypack, Recreation Director. I am here tonight to present to you file ordinance 2019-753, an amendment to ordinance 12.60.127, extending the end consumption time of fermented malt beverages and wine in conjunction with a beer and wine permit in certain areas of Traxler Park, Palmer Park, Riverside Park, the Town Square, and Festival Street during private events. This ordinance is cosponsored by Council President Gruber and City Councilmember Farrell. In 2013, file ordinance 2013-530 was adopted by city council that did establish a permit with a $50 fee, allowing the possession and consumption of fermented malt beverages and wines at the designated areas and times in Traxler, Riverside, and Palmer Parks. The designated areas at Traxler Park are the Warming House and the Lions Pavilion. The Riverside Park area is the North and South Pavilions, and then the Palmer Park Hilltop Pavilion, and the 10-foot surrounding area around each of those pavilions. In February of this year, the city council also adopted file ordinance 2019-747, which expanded the permit to include the JP Cullen Pavilion and Festival Street at the Town Square. Currently, the ordinance 12.60.127 allows for possession and consumption of fermented malt beverages and wines in those areas with a beer and wine permit for private events. The permit must be in conjunction with a pavilion rental or private event rental, and the permit must be approved administratively in the Recreation Division. The end time for consumption currently is 9:00 PM. The proposed ordinance amendment would change the end consumption time for the permit from 9:00 PM to 11:00 PM, except in the Palmer Park Hilltop area, which would remain 9:00 PM, which is consistent with established park end hours. The P-RAC voted in support of the city recommendation during their April 9th meeting, as well as the ALAC supported the city recommendation at their May 7th meeting. The Police Department has been informed and is also in support. The city recommends approval of file ordinance number 2019-753 after the public hearing, extending the end consumption time of fermented malt beverages and wine in conjunction with a beer and wine permit in certain areas of Traxler Park, Riverside Park, Palmer Park, the Town Square, and Festival Street during private events. With that, I'll take any questions after the public hearing.
Questions for Ms. Slaypack. Councilmember Markley.
Just had one. If the private event has an ending time of, of earlier than 11:00, I would assume that the permit for the alcohol would end with the permit time?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, it does not have to go until 11:00 PM.
Thank you.
And many do not.
Other questions? Let's open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Please go to the podium, your name and address, please.
David Kress, 1816 Elizabeth Street, and I would like to speak in favor of this. In January, I went and reserved Riverside Park Pavilion and paid the $50 fee. And after that, I found out that Sportsman's Park was $25, and that their time was till the park closed at 10 o'clock. So I was kind of disappointed, but I am in favor of changing it. And as, well, what I wanted to mention, yeah, I, this, this event is for the 60th high school class reunion, and did want to get a lot of the Janesville people back to Riverside Park, one of the most beautiful parks in Janesville. And so with this ordinance change, as the organizer of the event, I don't have to worry about people, you know, having half-full beers at 9:00 and having to finish them. So I would like to thank Councilman Gruber and Farrell for initiating this change.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Second call. Third call for speakers. Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. What is the pleasure of the council?
I'll make a motion to adopt file ordinance number 2019-753, amending the end consumption time of fermented malt beverages and wine in conjunction with a beer and wine permit.
Second.
Yes, we do. Now that it's on the floor, let's do a second reading.
File ordinance number 2019-753, an amendment to ordinance 12.60.127, extending the end time for consumption of fermented malt beverages and wines at certain areas of Traxler Park, Riverside Park, Palmer Park, the Town Square, and Festival Street.
We have a motion on the floor by Williams, second by Conley, to approve. File, additional comments or questions? Councilmember Wolf.
Shelley, just clarify the Palmer Park hours, the hilltop portion will...
Palmer Park would remain at 9:00 PM.
Entire park.
Just Palmer Park. So the only area within Palmer Park that you can get this permit is the, with the Palmer Park Hilltop Pavilion. If you reserve the Palmer Park West Pavilion or the East Pavilion, you cannot get a beer or wine permit with those pavilions.
Okay, so there'll be no inconsistency with this potential perking ordinance change that may be coming forward?
Right.
As to the hours?
Correct.
Because they...
You can't have beer/wine permit in those lower pavilions.
Doesn't really clarify that in the resolution, but it's clarified now. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Seeing none, what's the, what's all in?
Just, thank you, I just have a quick comment. I think this is a good change that we're making. It makes sense to me that have the hours correspond with the closing of the parks. And I remember when we, one of our committees, he agreed to move forward with alcohol at pavilions. I think it's worked out very well. I have not heard of any negatives, so I think this is a good step forward, and I think it's good for our citizens to be able to utilize these pavilions in this manner. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote, all in favor, raise your arm. And that motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to New Business, item number one, consideration in action on a proposed resolution authorizing the issuance of $20.02 million in general obligation promissory notes for financing various public purposes, and $3,020,000 in taxable general obligation promissory notes to provide financial assistance for community development. File resolution 2019-1656. Max Gagin.
Thank you, Council President Gruber and City Council. Before you tonight is the city's 2019 capital improvement plan, as well as our note issuance, which is a means of funding that capital improvement plan. So before addressing the note issue, first, I just want to provide the city council with some perspective on how we fund our capital improvement program. So this year's capital improvement plan is $44.4 million, and it's made up of three general categories of funding sources, that being new debt at 52%, other funding sources at 37%, and prior year funding, whether it be borrowed funds, grant funds, and that comes in at 11%. But really, I think the thing of note here is that the amount of new debt to support our capital improvement program has actually been decreasing for the past couple of years as we've been either successful in receiving grants or appropriating more money through the operating budget. So you're seeing the other funding sources category continue to grow over time. So tonight, the city council is asked to adopt file resolution number 2019-1656, which authorizes the city to issue promissory notes, really for two purposes. First, roughly $20 million for public purposes, and these are treated as non-taxable promissory notes, as well as $3 million to provide a financial assistance for community development, and these are considered a taxable private purpose, and they're being issued as a separate note. For the council's awareness, we could have considered awarding these as one issuance, however, that would have made the entirety of the issuance a taxable issuance, because the $3 million would have exceeded the threshold of 5% of your total issue that can be for private purposes. So it's more cost-effective to do it as two separate issuances, one as a taxable and one as a non-taxable issuance. So the total amount of debt under consideration tonight is $23 million, with $10 million attributed to the general fund, and $13 million for non-general fund, mostly for enterprise funds such as water and wastewater. So far, the city council is committed to fund $16.6 million, which is 72% of all new debt, and we do not have the opportunity to refinance debt. It's not cost-effective, given where interest rates are currently today, as well as what the interest rates were when that debt was issued. So looking at the significant projects, really five categories make up about 86% of all the new debt as part of this issuance. The first and largest category being street infrastructure at $7.2 million, which would be roughly $9 million if we included the prior year funding, so prior note proceeds. Roughly $5 million for water, wastewater, and stormwater infrastructure. $3 million for a developer payment to Shine Medical Technologies to build their medical isotope facility on the south side. $2.8 million for city hall and library improvements, and $2 million for the preliminary construction of the sanitary landfill expansion site. So about $20 million of the $23 million of new debt come into these five categories. Looking specifically at our general fund, I mentioned we're issuing about $10 million. That would come to an average annual debt service payment of about $1,135,000 a year. However, our projected debt service payment for the 2020 general fund budget would actually only increase about $30,000, and that's primarily due to the retirement of existing debt. So we are retiring about $1.3 million in general fund debt in 2020. So that's the reason why that increase is so small, which is great. As the council may be aware, the debt service payment in the general fund has increased roughly $700,000 to $800,000. roughly $700,000 to $800,000 a year, and we've really reached a point where our program has really plateaued that we can sustain borrowing about $8 to $10 million a year and keep that debt service payment flat. So it's been a long time coming, but I think we're at a very, very good point in our general fund borrowing, that we can maintain a consistent program and not have to worry about its significant increase in that debt service payment, or therefore taxes for the average homeowner. So that does project out to about a 0.1% increase in the general fund's portion of the property tax levy for next year, which for the average assessed home comes out to about 90 cents.
Sorry, how much?
90 cents.
90 cents, thank you.
Next, one of the items we do look at is the city's debt burden. By Wisconsin State statute, cities are limited in the amount of debt they can have outstanding to 5% of their equalized value. As of the end of 2018, we had $97,195,000 in outstanding general obligation debt, which equated to about 2.11% of the city's equalized value. We did make a principal payment of roughly $18 million on February 1 of this year. And then if we factor in the amount of this new issuance, what we're projecting for the end of 2019 is that we would have $102,260,000 in outstanding general obligation debt, which is an increase of 5 million, 5.1 million. But actually, as a percentage of our equalized value, it will be decreasing to 2.08%, and that's because our equalized value has grown at a faster rate than the amount of debt, new debt we're bringing on. So I think that kind of what we're seeing from Michelle's presentation, as the city's equalized assessed value has really grown in those three years, our capacity to issue debt to provide the services our community needs has increased as well. So Council Policy 75 does govern debt and debt management, and within there, there are a couple of metrics that we try, we abide by. So this year's note issuance does fall within the established parameters from Council Policy 75. So as I mentioned, our general obligation debts project to be about 2.08% of equalized value. The City Council does limit it to 2.5%. So we'll be under that threshold, as well as our general debt service payment is projected to be about 18.9% of all the general fund expenditures in our 2020 budget, which falls under the City Council limit of 20%. Next, just want to provide the council with a little bit of perspective on last year's note issuance, as well as the past five years' averages for our issuances. So last year, in 2018, we issued about $22 million worth of debt, all for new borrowing, about $8 million in the general fund, and about $14 million for the other funds. Looking at a five-year average, we've averaged about $21 million in issuances, new debt being about $18 million, and refunded debt about 2 and 1/2. So this size debt at about $23 million, a little bit above where we've been last year, as well as our five-year average. But again, a lot of it has to do with a couple of large one-time items. Next, I'll talk a little bit about the process. So tonight, the City Council is asked to adopt what is called the initial resolution, which sets the parameters for the sale. So at this time, the City Council has the option to either add and/or delete projects and/or funding from the program before its adoption. At the next council meeting on May 28, the City Council can either approve the capital improvement program and note issue as is, or delete projects. So no new funding can be added at the next City Council meeting. And then lastly, our sale is occurring on Monday, June 24, at 10:00 a.m. And then later that night, the City Council award the sale of the promissory notes to the lowest bidder, establish interest rates, and agree to levy taxes thereafter to cover debt service payments. So as part of your material, there was three exhibits. First is the proposed 2019 capital improvement plan, and that's a schedule by funding source. If you look on there, there's some items highlighted in green. Those are the ones the City Council has previously committed to fund through prior actions, such as the award of a public works contract. Exhibit two is a detailed description of all of the 2019 capital improvement plan projects, and exhibit three is a copy of Council Policy 75 on debt management. With that, I would ask the City Council to adopt File Resolution 2019-1656, to issue $20,020,000 in general obligation promissory notes for financing various public purposes, and $3,020,000 in taxable general obligation promissory notes to provide financial assistance for community development. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Wolf.
Max, the developer incentive of $3,020,000, that's earmarked for the Shine development within TIF 35.
Correct.
Is it fair to say that the repayment of that borrowing within TIF 35 comes from the increased taxes that are paid on that parcel as a result of the end value of Shine's project, which I think we've estimated at $50 million of assessed value? Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Gagan? Councilmember Farrell.
Max, I didn't do a detailed comparison, but the list of all the items on here is pretty much, it's the same as what we looked at for our annual budget.
Correct.
Has there been, my question, has there been any significant additions from when we looked at this, like October?
So as part of our 2019 budget, there is, we include the major capital projects budget.
Right.
And I would have to say that most of the projects that are listed within that major capital projects are found on this sheet. However, some of the cost estimates we had at that time are not as accurate as what we had today, because we've awarded some contracts. So some of the dollar amounts have changed.
Okay.
But I'm not aware of any significant projects that have been added since then. And if they had, they would have gone through and been awarded through like a public works contract that the City Council has already seen.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Gagan? Seeing none, Councilmember Wolf.
I'll move File Resolution 2019-1656. That's in order.
That is in order. Councilmember Wolf has moved approval as her second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Conley. Further discussion? Councilmember Wolf?
No.
Conley?
Nope.
Hearing none, all in favor, raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Max.
All right, thank you.
Next item is a first reading and scheduled a public hearing on a proposed ordinance amending Chapter 18 zoning and Chapter 8 health and safety of the Code of General Ordinances to create a section regulating fences. File Ordinance Number 2019-748.
Ordinance Number 2019-748, an ordinance repealing JGO Chapter 8.12, amending various portions of Chapter 18.32, and creating JGO Section 18.32.035 to establish new fence regulations with penalties and other relief for violations thereof as set forth in JGO Chapter 18.28.
Thank you. We'll refer that to the Plan Commission and schedule a public hearing for June 24 of 2019. Next item is item number three, first reading and scheduled a public hearing on a proposed revision to Janesville General Ordinance 10-36-050, authorizing sleeping in parked vehicles in designated public parking areas between 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. when posted. File Ordinance Number 2019-755.
File Ordinance Number 2019-755, an ordinance to amend Chapter 10, vehicles and traffic pertaining to overnight public parking in the city of Janesville, with penalties as set forth in JGO 10.36.060.
Thank you. I'm going to schedule a public hearing after this matter has been referred and reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, the Police Department, and the Fire Department. And that would mean that the earliest we could have a second hearing and public hearing would be July 22. So hearing no objections, so ordered. Let's go to the next item, item number...
Mark. Just a comment. The Police Department was already part of this conversation.
I'm requesting formally a second time.
A second review.
Formal, yes.
I don't understand formal review.
In writing, thank you.
In writing?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. The next item. Common Council announcements. Item thereafter is consideration or one or more motions to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19-85 Sub 1 Sub C for the purposes outlined on the agenda packet.
Don't move.
Motion by Williams.
Second.
Second by Conley. Anything additional? Let's vote, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously.